The Fair Board on the checks and that type of stuff. But I think this is the main thing is kind of looking at the, how the policy runs and if there's a better, more efficient way to be the county, to be more involved in the County Free Fair Association, to be more involved and kind of take a look at that. That was a lot. So do you guys have questions?
Well, not a question necessarily, more of a comment. Um, I think the Free Fair Board is an independent organization, right? I mean, it is tied to the county, but um, they're their own entity. So I, I think what, what I think should probably happen is the Free Fair to determine kind of what they want on their end. And if that is, i- if that's, if they need help from this end, they could ask and we could see uh, what the availability is for us to help. I mean, there's going to be certain things on this end, like what Aaron's doing that we would need to continue to do. But the, the Fair Board may have their, you know, Secretary Treasurer or whatever that wants to fill the role that you're currently doing. Uh, I think it would, i- unless I'm missing something.
Um, Cody, also I forgot to say, um, in Immunis, um, of course, on the purchases, I'm the one that goes into Immunis and I sign off on the Immunis transactions on the purchases. So that would be, um, and again, I'm not a county employee, as you guys know, but somehow in the system for so many years that I'm there. Um, so that would be something that possibly the Fair Board would have that. Is that kind of what you're thinking?
Yeah. Or a person? I, I, I mean, I, I was looking to see, I, I don't see legal counsel in here. But I, I think they're a separate legal entity and for us to push and say, you have to do this and you have to use this and you have to do that. I mean, to an extent, you know, we have to operate within the system that we have. But I don't think us dictating what their processes and procedures are, as long as they are workable on our end, I, I don't, I, I think they need to kind of determine what they would like to do. And if they need help on this end, we can see if there's stuff that we can do to help facilitate their needs. But if they want to, you know, do it via their Secretary or Treasurer or the President or whoever in their organization, step into the role that you've been performing. I think that's their decision. I don't want to make that decision for them. Mr. Parker, how are you?
Just fine. Y'all hate seeing me here, I know. Uh.
No, I appreciate seeing you here. Um, and I've told you this several times. Of all the, the presidents of the Fair Board that we've had in the past, I've seen you way more than any of the others. I think you've taken. No, no, it's great. Cause I mean, I, I see an active role in leadership that you're trying to take in trying to grow that organization. Uh, I, I commend you for it. I really appreciate it.
Nothing against always you, Ladonna, but we got too many fingers. Nobody knows what we do, really. We want material. We gotta go through some clerk or whatever. My time against us. It's not right. We make it happen. I mean, but we're, we're ready to take the whole thing. We even talked about hiring, paying a secretary up here part-time just to deal with POs or whatever we need. After their show, I mean, we're printing checks, we're mailing stuff out. We're not scared. I mean, there's a loophole someplace and I'm not a politician. I just kick indoors and let's get the problem fixed. I don't know if you know, but we're working on land out in Hera and we got a lot of things going, try to make the county money instead of just cost money. So go ahead, Ladonna.
No, I was just going to address Cody, when you said they're a separate entity, because Jeff and I've had this conversation. Because when um, I get the estimate needs and when I do all that, of course, I follow the Oklahoma County policies and procedures. I go through all the different steps, correct? So I know Jeff has, in the comment he just made was, we're ready to take it all. I, I, I guess the question, Jeff, you correct me if I'm wrong, is if they do take it over, which I think they're willing to, do they still have to follow all these steps? Or can they encumber the money into a different?
Well, that's why I was looking for legal counsel to, to find out. We'd want to, i- i- well, maybe, but there, there may still be some stuff that we need to do, you know, on our end. But what, what I was kind of more getting to is, uh, let's just use any of the three districts up here. Let's say District Two, for instance. The person that creates their estimate of needs is who Commissioner Mon wants doing their estimate of needs. They're processing their, um, their requisitioning, uh, they have a requisitioning officer, they have a receiving officer. They make those purchase determinations as to what they're going to purchase, when they're going to purchase it and everything. And, and they rightfully should because they are, they're part of the county, but they're an organization within the county. I'm not saying that they can necessarily go out and just do it however. But I'm saying, I don't think we should be dictating who their requisitioning officer is, or their receiving officer is and how they go about it. Now, they may need to do it the same way all of the internal county departments. We all follow that same process. But who's doing it on their end, I think is more up to them.
Oklahoma County is different than all other counties in Oklahoma. Cause they have a state bylaws for county fair boards. Um, if you know that or not, but there is. We're just sort of, I'm trying to be nice here. Uh. There is bylaws out there that we can go to a perfect T, but we're dealing with Oklahoma County. Y'all tell us what we gotta do. That's the long story short. Did that make any sense or?
Tell them now, if I'm understanding.
No, go ahead.
If I'm understanding from our conversations, because not just you, but other Fair Board people has come to me and they don't understand why they have to go. And that was the reason I made that comment through these different procedures. They felt like since the money was allocated to them, and I know that 90% thing in April, I don't quite understand the right terms on that. But they don't understand why they can't get all the money and put it in their Oklahoma County Free Fair Association and just write checks on everything and not go through POs in that process. Is that correct?
Well, sort of. I don't mind the POs. I don't, I mean, we need paper trails. But like our judges, I mean, we pay premiums out. We can pay our judges. We have to file paperwork as their county employee. Well, they may got $300. They're not getting a 1099 at the end of the year or anything.
So, so how about this? Why don't we ask them to figure out what their best case scenario, what they would want to do? And do a, a white paper, provide us with that information. We can take a look at it. We can get with legal counsel and we can determine if any and all of those things can happen, or if they can't, and that'll be kind of the starting place. We can look at it and say, yeah, we can't do any of this stuff. I'm sorry, we're gonna have to do something else. Or we can do, you know, five of the six things and kind of have a, a, a starting place.
We need a playbook. We have a playbook.
Yeah. So why don't you start out figuring, you know, the, the way you would like to see it structured and what you would want to do? And we'll see if legally and operationally, that's something that we can, we can do. And if not, we can make the necessary modifications, trying to stay as close to what you guys would like as possible. Now, it may be way away from what you guys want. At the end of the day, I don't know. But at least we know where you want to be and we can try to get there.
We're trying to run it like a business, period. I mean, that's, we're businessmen now, thank goodness. But I'll give you a playbook, okay? I don't, I should have brought one. I was driving in and it just dawned on me. I should have brought it. Their thing just laid it on your lap, so.
No, that, that's fine, Jeff. I mean, this is just the beginning, the conversations that we're just getting, getting it started. So let me ask you this. Um, would there be somebody if, I mean, cause he, he doesn't have um, funds right now for um, an administrative assistant. He might get asked for that in his estimate of needs, of course, in, in May. But um, is there somebody within the county that you guys, that, that we could make the purchasing, like the purchasing requisition officer and the receiving and all that, that would be?
Did you say Aaron Moore is right now?
Yes. And then also Ashley in accounting is the receiving, but neither one of them really, I mean, I'm not saying anything bad about them, but I totally, totally get it. Neither one of them wants, you know, that additional responsibility.
But that's what they have. So I understand. There's some things that Joe, that Joe has me do that I don't necessarily want to do, but I do it because I'm told that's what I'm gonna do, right?
No, I got you.
So.
We don't mind putting in for Secretary and paying half the wage. I mean, we would have to figure it into the budget and we need to contact first. That's.
Okay. So I think for now, we probably want to rock along the way it is. We're not going to change anything today.
Right.
Um, but we can.
Would we come back, when we got our playbook, would we come back and get back on this agenda or is there another?
We can just defer to the next agenda.
Uh, yeah, but we'd come back to this meet committee.
Yeah, I, I would recommend sending it out though ahead of time to the offices individually. Don't send it group, because I don't want to get into a group discussion and, you know, potentially violate open meetings. But if you want to send that ahead of time, that way all the offices have a chance to read and digest the information and can have um, better, um, better information and ask better questions when we get in here.
You have a lot of backgrounds there outside, so it's okay.
Okay. And, and it's probably something that we'll need to get legal counsel involved in and make sure, you know, that we're, we're following statute. And uh, if, if you're, it sounds like you guys are wanting a lot of deference in the way you do it. I get that. I don't know statutorily whether we can, you know, accommodate that or not. But if we know what you're wanting, then we can, you know, get with legal counsel and take a look at it and see if we can accommodate that. If we can't, how close can we get to it?
I love Ladonna to death, but she don't know what we do. Have time for the livestock and all that running cattle through. And we can take, I mean, we can crunch the numbers. We can tell you what who's getting paid that day of the show, period. All cut and dried. It's in the, the rulebook and we know what we're doing. So. Also.
Thank you, Jeff, for coming today. Thank you, guys.
Thank you for your time. So would we like to ju- just defer that?
Um, until the next regularly scheduled policy and governance meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. I'm going to recommend that we uh, discuss for at the end, let everybody get through their reports.
Okay.
Make it a little more, a little more efficient.
Okay.
Thank you. Number five, um, is the discussion and possible action regarding policies, procedures, um, status reports relating to our grants program. Hi Nikki.
Good morning, guys. How's it going?
Thank you.
Um, I just, do you guys have the attachments available before I start?
Yes.
Okay. Um, on the Grants Watch List 2024, I just want to say that that is um, more of a comprehensive portfolio of all of the, the grants that have, that we have done. We may not have necessarily been awarded those grants, but man, uh, manpower was exerted for us to get those grants submitted. And so just for transparency, I want you guys to have that comprehensive portfolio of all of the grants that the county has submitted thus far. If you have any individual questions about any of those grants on the Grants Watch List, um, I would love to entertain them. Um, if not, I'll move on to my next item.
I'll take on the first one. You have Need Energy Conservation Plan. Tell me, tell us a little bit more about that.
So um, with that one, that was um, an opportunity funding that we had available to us. Um, that we um, did not take advantage of, um, because we have to have an energy conservation plan. And that energy conservation plan, we just as a county, we weren't ready to proceed with that. So we'll shoot for that one again next year.
Okay. It's the only questions I had.
Um, if you would like to um, look at the the Oklahoma County Grants Report. Um, what that is, is that is a report of funding that the county has received. So um, at the end of the year, not fiscal year, but the end of the calendar year for the Grants Department, we ended with a grand total of $4,666,391.51. And so that is what we've been able to, um, that's what we've been awarded in the two years that I've been here. So that's just a comprehensive, um, more granulated look at the funding that we have received. Um, the only difference to that is if you look on the second page, um, you'll see um, that we were awarded two grants, um, that totaled a little over a million dollars. Um, we were awarded um, the environmental quality Volkswagen grants. And so two districts um, applied and they were awarded. And District One was awarded $642,765. And they are going to purchase three dump trucks with chassis plus some dump bodies. Um, for the two dump trucks. And District Three was awarded $515,338.42. And they are going to purchase a water truck, a bucket truck and a dump truck with attachments. And so um, that was a total of $1,158,103.42 um, that we were awarded for that environmental grant. And then the AG Sheriff's Grant, we were awa- awarded that $300,000. And so that's what took us to our $4,666,391.51 to end the calendar year for the Grants Department. If you guys have any questions, um, I would love to.
On two, the Public Fleet uh, Conversion Grant. How many of those uh, vehicle chargers are going to each of the locations?
So we have nine. So we know, we've talked about it. Logistically, we don't know where every single one is going to go, but we know that we want to put some in Metro. About, about six in Metro. Um, and then we wanted to spread out the other ones throughout other county uh, locations. Perhaps the Election Board might get one. Um, we talked about perhaps juvenile having one, but nothing clear and concise. And these are just ideas that have kind of floated around. But as far as here on campus, we're looking at about six chargers.
Okay. And on number four, your Mental Health and Substance Abuse Grant.
Yep.
It mentions the funding will be used to fill funding gaps. So what funding gaps are you talking about?
So we are in contract or we have an MOU or um, the, the District Attorney's Office is our sub recipient for this funding. And they use that funding to then provide funding to the other uh, programs that they have under their umbrella, such as Diversion Hub, Team and a couple of other um, um, organizations that do um, work for treatment courts, but.
So the county has updated the, the MOU with the Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse for this year, for those funds. Uh, last, my recollection was we have not received the MOU from the uh, Public Defender District Attorney's Office, who's receiving the money for that. Have, have you heard anything on that MOU?
No, I have not. And I spoke with Tony. And so I think that that's something that, that they're working on. Um, I just received word from ODMH um, about invoicing and how that will be done. And so I know that we can't give them any of the new funds just yet. So I know that that's something that they're working on and they're aware of.
Right. We're halfway through the fiscal year though, and we still don't have it. And while it may not be a huge deal right now, because they had some funds left from the previous year to, to get through now. Probably need to work this uh, situation out so that in future fiscal years, when we're not in that situation, we're not waiting half a year to be able to disperse funds.
Yes, sir. I agree.
All right. I didn't want to interrupt your report. Um, do we have an update on OU and our opioid grant? And what the, the plan is moving forward in regards to if we need to send it out for RFP or um, who was their recommendation? Just an update on what we discussed at the last meeting.
So yes, I was able to, to reach out to Dr. Mayor from OU and ask more about who this nonprofit is that they're recommending. Um, she was able to email me back and she gave me a warm handoff to the nonprofit. Um, but I have not been able to uh, to make contact with them just yet. Um, I was able to visit with um, with Chantel a little bit about this. Um, and really, it is, it is really up to, to us in what direction that we're willing to go. Um, if we want to stay with the same types of service, then we would need to probably draft an RFP around those services. Um, and it would really need to mirror the proposal that was uh, submitted from OU, because those are the services that we've kind of selected at this time. If we want to kind of recalculate what services that we would like to use for this funding, then most likely we would probably need to redraft an RFP and, 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 and solicit for more, for, for more proposals. Um, to kind of find a service that kind of fits what we're wanting to do at this moment. So it's kind of really up to us. Do we want to stay with the same service? Or do we want news, a new type of service? And so that's how we would need to, to go forward.
My recollection from the last meeting was that you had spoken with the AG's office and they said that if we wanted to choose different services, that that was available to us. We would just need to, I'm assuming, let them know what those services are and then they would do another approval?
So it would be, we would have to re, once we do whatever we, we're, we're gonna do, we would resubmit our new MOU with whomever we've chosen.
Submit it to the AG's office and see if he would sign off or not sign off.
That's right.
And I, I think what we were planning on doing was waiting until like our January uh, meeting and have some discussions, whether we want to stay with those same services or maybe draft an open-ended RFP uh, so that uh, folks that are out there that maybe want to provide these types of services can let us know what they can do. But also open it up for others, because it'd been like a year and a half since.
It's been a while.
Done this, so.
For some of those nonprofits in regards to their needs, or they may have found funding elsewhere. Is there, remind me, is there a deadline of use of funds?
Twenty-six.
Okay.
In twenty, in, in June 30 of 26. So the end of our fiscal year, their fiscal year in 26. So it kind of, you know, gives us, it, it gives that next person that we choose, it kind of puts them in a, in a time constraint. Um, so we've got options that we can kind of talk about between here and then. Um, it's just, we just, us, you guys just have to let me know um, if you want the same services or if you guys want to solicit for different services. And how we go about that will come about your choice, so.
Well, I, I will say if we decide to stay with the same services and there's conversation about utilizing, I don't know what the nonprofit is and I, I don't want to know at this point, because what I'm getting ready to say. Um, I, I don't want it to feel like I'm picking on or supporting or whatever, because I'm not. Um, if we do choose to stay with the same services, I would want a determination from the Purchasing Office, whether we need to send out an RFP for those services and give this entity and others an opportunity to apply, just like we did before. I think that's probably the best situation. Um, but if the board is wanting to just say, well, OU was doing it and this was their provider, I would at bare minimum want purchasing, signing off on that and letting us know. But it seems to me that it would be best to either go out for a broad RFP or a narrow RFP.
Correct. And that was the recommendation from Chantel when we spoke was if we do stick with those same services, we need to kind of, you know, restructure the bid specifically for those services, because our initial RFP was extremely broad and we kind of solicited for all abatement services. Um, so it would definitely be a restructure of that bid if we did choose the same services that we had chosen before.
Remind me what those services are.
It was to service uh, uh, pregnant women, um, or, and women who have recently had children, who were tested positive for opioid during delivery. So women and pregnant women who have had addicted children or children who tested positive for opioids during delivery.
Now, just as a precursor though, I would say that, you know, we, we kind of had it structured with OU, how we were going to do it. And we found out who they were going to be using. I think we also need to be careful when we structure a specific RFP instead of the broad, that we're not so specific that it's so tied to that other program that one nonprofit was tied to, that they're going to have a huge advantage over the other. So it, it can't be, well.
I agree.
I'm preaching the choir. You, you know.
I get it.
Okay.
Yeah. So that's pretty specific. And I enjoyed being able to see all the different entities that provide that opioid abatement.
Yeah.
Um, we had a good variety of, of different organizations that we could really support, but.
We did.
Um, thank you for reminding. We can discuss this further in January at that policy and governance meeting. I was just curious if we had any other uh, update on information.
Yep. I'll, I'll kind of put you guys a packet together, basically what the bid looked like, the, that initial bid, um, the scoring on it, um, who we chose down to the final three to kind of give you guys this, you know, overview of what was done those, you know, a year ago and, and how we came to that selection. And if we want to s- to stay there or if we want to move on. So I'll kind of put you guys a packet together to kind of lay out everything that happened over that year, so that you guys kind of have an overview of what, what we did.
Now, is this, are they redoing it again this next year? This grant opportunity to where there's more funding available? Cause I remember when we, when we made application, we found out that, I believe this was the one, correct me if I'm wrong. But if you applied with another entity, that you could maximize dollars. So let's say the maximum that you could get was 200,000 and the other entity was 200,000. Instead of getting 400,000, you get like 600,000 or something like that by combining forces. Is that, that's this one, right?
Same one.
And is it, are they going to do another grant process where we can apply to maybe partner with?
They are, but we would have to, to, we would have to be able to apply for that grant funding round. So they did reopen up the funding, but they reopened up the funding for the people who were denied the first time around. And so they gave recommendations to those organizations on how they can get the funding. And so they're going to reopen up the entire grant funding again. And then yes, that would be whenever we could re-enter a new proposal. And so we would be resubmitting for the grant.
Do you know when that is going to be?
They've talked about at the end of 2025. So we were awarded a two-year grant cycle. And so the people who are on that first cycle, they've been awarded through 26. But conversations have said that they are going to reopen up the grant funding in 2026, once they've allocated all of the money for the people that were denied before. And they'll reopen it, it up for everyone again.
Because I'm just thinking, when we're looking at this in January or February, if we know we're going to apply in the future and we know there's probably going to be a combination effort again, to be able to maximize funds, to be able to get more funds for the project. When we're looking at the project that we have money for right now, if we are doing an RFP process, is there another entity out there that we may want to partner with down the road to be able to maximize those funds? And if so, would we want to go ahead and just go ahead and do that partnership now? Start a program, really kind of show the benefits of it over the next year, year and a half in, when, until that grant period expires. And then the two of us, both entities that can apply and get a, a additional funding, because we're doing it together, apply together for funding whenever it's opened up generally. Just kind of a, a thought that we may want to consider.
I'm all for that. I'm all for collaboration.
Yeah. And it'll create a stronger grant application, because it'll show impact and sustainability, so.
Correct. Yes. So I'll, we can revisit at the first of the year. I'll put together a packet. Hopefully y'all have more information about the non, the nonprofit, if you guys want it. Um, and we can.
I, I personally don't want any of that information right now, because I, I don't want to know, because I don't want it to feel like you're either choosing or, or not choosing a particular entity. I want to make sure that the process is right.
I definitely think we should open it up for an RFP, but we can discuss further in January.
Sounds like a plan.
Thank you.
Just come with a recommendation in January and then we can talk through what that looks like moving forward.
Okay. Sounds good. I'll get with Chantel in purchasing and. Okay, sounds good, I'll get with Chantel and purchasing and kind of see what direction we should go as far as the RFP is concerned.
Okay.
And then the only thing left that we have on the agenda are, uh, is possibly, um, adopting the grants administration framework. Or just at least open it up for discussion on w- w- what you guys would like to do if you had any, any questions. Um, after me reading through it, I found a couple of things that should be amended, but that can be always done on the back end. Um, so I just kind of wanted to open it up for discussion to kind of see where we want to go. Starting the new year, if this is something that we kind of want to implement or do we kind of want to talk about it a little more?
I I think we need to talk about it a little more and I think we need a specific agenda item for the framework with the framework attached to the agenda. Instead of just doing it under this general, uh, topic.
Okay.
I think we should have a specific for that.
Yes, sir.
We, Nikki and I did visit and one thing, um, that we have found challenging at the county is bringing, um, one policy or one framework. For a county, the county as a whole and involving all the, um, other departments and elected officials respectively and so. Um, we, we need to have that discussion and then January would be a good, good time to do that. But we also need to make sure that we're communicating with all the other elected officials and those that are, um. Applying for grants and, uh, make sure that, you know, if they could be present for that meeting so that way we can hear their feedback. Um, and try to, um, learn more about, you know, what this will look like. I know it's important in regards to your grant writing success. Uh, but it is, as we've seen with the retention policy that we just hired a consultant for, you know, in our emergency preparation plan, it can be. Challenging to get everyone on the same page. So, um, if we're gonna put together a framework for the whole county as a whole, we need to make sure we have all, all, all the different, um. People that affects.
Yeah, what we could do is have you put an agenda item on BET where all the.
Oh, that would be great.
All the elected officials have representatives on that committee, it's the. Grants have a financial impact on the county and how we go about and ask for grants and whatever. We could always start there, have those conversations, maybe get a contact person, um, for grants. So for instance, for District One, you know, I'm on BET, but I probably wouldn't be the. Necessarily the, the contact, yeah, I'm guessing it would probably be Dan out at our yard would be the, the contact on that. Same thing with the other elected officials, they may have somebody else that could be your. Contact to find out what is it that you would like to see, you know, what hurdles? Do you think this framework would create for your organization? Is there something else that we need to add to this, something that we need to take away? Not saying that we will add or take away just because of one entity. But we can have those conversations and considerations and hopefully get to a document that works for everybody.
Sounds good, and would that be the same for the internal controls policy as well? For the frameworks and the internal controls policy, there are two different, uh, policies?
Now, let's.
Or just, we want to start with just the framework?
Let's start with the framework and then see if we need to get the controls.
Okay.
There as well later, but I think the framework is more important at this point, right? I mean, we gotta. We gotta know what that is before we can zero in on the other.
Okay.
I think.
Yeah, thank you.
So first of the year, does that sound good for the BET agenda item, first of the year? Um, we won't, I would, so I'm just saying that because I probably, we probably won't have this done. For that first, um, January P and G, and so I'm just trying to.
Yeah, just, just get it on because what we can do is, uh, Brandy's here from District Two, welcome Brandy. Uh, we can just kind of give the primer to everybody that, hey, you know, we're not ready to really have a, you know, robust discussion about this right now. But this is something that is, um, in the pipeline and, uh, be ready for our next meeting to. You know, have some specific discussions related to a, a framework.
Yep, sounds good. Do you guys have any, any more questions for me?
Thank you, Nikki. Motion received, report. Thanks, Nikki.
Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Merry Christmas, guys, and happy holidays.
Merry Christmas.
Okay, moving on to number six, which is the discussion possible action regarding our contract provider encumbrance and any other alternatives. Um, related to ARPA Project one zero one three zero, which is the, uh, medical behavioral care, uh, services facility, Danielle.
Good morning. We are aware there's been some ongoing conversation about the best way to move forward with the encumbrance of the behavioral health facility. Um, and given that it will ultimately end up being a PBA process, it may make the most sense to go ahead and continue to follow those. Um, already outlined procedures of the way PBA incorporates their items and since it is using ARPA funds. Uh, the suggestion would be to do it through the sub-recipient agreement, but then maintains how PBA generally, uh, goes about their properties. Versus creating a new system outside of that. So really just opening it up to see how you guys want to move forward, whether it would be something like adding it into the PBA sub-recipient agreement. Or any other way you would prefer to move forward.
I think if you don't have issues, uh, as our consultant with it being in the, just the general sub-recipient agreement with PBA. I think it gives us the most latitude moving forward if we just. Move those funds over to PBA and then let PBA contract, um, with the entities that are gonna be doing the work. Uh, as opposed to us having to get it to. A contractor and then if there's things that change, then we have to go to the contract, it's easier for us to go to PBA.
Yes, and that's how they have been doing their work previously. Um, the projects that they fund and the entities they have even outside of ARPA run through PBA versus going through the BOCC.
Do you happen to have a draft of that?
I do.
To approve, so that way I can put it on the agenda for BOCC on Friday. Should we move forward with that plan?
And since there are, there, there is another consideration for an item to be added to PBA, this has both. We can always strike the language, if you don't want to include it, we can talk about it in the next agenda item, but this has the language for the medical facility as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dee.
So since this is the first time I'm looking at this, uh, so what, okay, the, the fifteen thousand, sorry, fifteen million. Fifteen million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, six hundred one dollars and seventy-five cents, what does that include as of right now?
That is what is currently in your sub-recipient agreement with the PBA, so that is the current funded portion of the EOC. Your Metro One and Metro Two elevators, um, and the ICB elevator. And the ICB, uh, remodel.
Looks like it's everything with the exception of the medical and behavioral health facility.
Correct. The other inclusion on that agreement is increasing the EOC project.
Okay, yeah. Well, here, I may be reading this wrong, but it's saying, uh. Not to exceed amount is being increased by thirty-nine million, nine hundred and six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars, right? So it's the total increase and then if you go to paragraph three, attachment B seven. For the medical and behavioral health facility, a not to exceed increase of thirty-nine million, nine oh six, five thirty. So that dollar amount is the exact same dollar amount as what is listed in paragraph one as the total increase, so.
I think it's missing the four twenty-three.
I think it's missing the four twenty-three in that, um. I mean, I, I would think, unless I'm reading this wrong, paragraph one referenced the not to exceed amount. I think that should be a total of the thirty-nine million, nine oh six, five thirty and the four twenty-three, two ninety-six, oh seven.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yeah.
And it lists it here as just the thirty-nine million, so I think we need to add that four twenty-three to the thirty-nine in paragraph one.
Yeah, absolutely. Good catch. I can have it updated before, uh, the BOCC as well.
Okay.
Yeah, if I could get this.
David, did you have anything to add? We're, this is talking about increasing your project details, do you have anything?
And what this will be doing, if you would like to go ahead and increase the EOC project is. The countywide radio project is no longer going to have any, uh, additional expenses associated with that project. So what we're doing is moving it out of that emergency management project and would be moving it into this EOC project, this part of emergency management. Um, to use for their radio and frequency materials as well at the EOC.
And that's in another agenda item.
Uh, it, it's the next one, yes.
Do you have any questions, Paul?
Nope. So on item six, it's, uh, discussion possible action regarding contract provider encumbrance and other alternatives related to ARPA Project. One zero one three zero, the medical behavioral health. So that is, we just need to make the recommendation that. Um, this particular project is going to be served by moving the money to PBA. Uh, as a sub-recipient, that's all you need on item six, correct? Okay, that is my motion.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And now item seven is referring to the PBA sub-recipient agreement, which we already have one, you're wanting to amend it. To reflect the additions in the, um. In the EOC construction project and related materials. As well as adding the dollar amount that would be necessary from our action on item six, the thirty-nine million.
Correct.
And you will. Correct this for BOCC as well as PBA, it'll need to be on PBA as well.
Yes.
Um, to a, reflect the increase amount being the thirty-nine, well, I'll just. Figure it out here real quick. It's too early for me to do this in my head. So it should be forty million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and ten cents. Yeah, I will make a, a motion to recommend to BOCC, uh, to enter into an addend, uh. To approve an addendum to the PBA sub-recipient agreement, increasing, uh, the dollars, uh, the ARPA dollars allocated to PBA. Um, increasing it by forty million, three hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty-six dollars and ten cents. Uh, four hundred and twenty-three thousand, two ninety-seven oh seven, being, uh, an additional allocation to the EOC project. As well as thirty-nine million, nine hundred and six thousand, five hundred and thirty dollars. Uh, be associated with the medical and behavioral health facility.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so that covered six and seven?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and so I will add it, uh, to the agenda for Friday. But just so that I add it correctly, um, for the BOCC, it would be the addendum or amendment to that contract. And then on to PBA for approval of the agreement, is that correct? Okay.
Yeah, it'll be, on BOCC, we'll need to have an agenda item. To allocate ARPA funds, the forty million, three twenty-nine. And an agenda item for the amended sub-recipient agreement. On PBA, we'll just need the sub-recipient agreement.
Got, okay. Thank you for that clarification. And then on to number eight.
This is again related to the Drainage Culvert project, last month you moved seventy-five thousand dollars out of that project. Since it was not going to be expended, there is a remaining balance of this twenty-five hundred dollars now that will also not be expended. That can be moved back into the fourteen fifteen account and based on the motion that Cody had made last time, that will automatically be moved towards the behavioral health facility.
So that'll change.
Is that tw- yeah, is that twenty-five hundred included in the thirty-nine?
It is not, because we had not had this approval yet, so we will need to amend those amounts and it is something Chantel and I have talked about since there will be some movement at. Um, Budget Board this week as well as BOCC, our final encumbrances. It may be wise to have a special meeting very quickly on Monday, um, to move any remaining funds, whatever that dollar amount would be into the agreement for PBA. Cause you're still gonna have some dollars moving in the next few days.
Yeah, okay, we'll call it special.
Call the special.
Are you saying that we need a, a special budget board in order on Monday?
We will, yeah.
I think ultimately you'll need a P and G and a.
Cause BOCC and today's Tuesday, Wednesday, yeah.
Yeah, and they'd have to approve it on the Friday, okay.
Merry Christmas, Budget Board.
So we need a motion in order to approve.
Uh, well, hang on just a second. So the idea, when I made the motion in the last meeting, was that. So we didn't have to nickel and dime and come back and get recommendations on little pieces of money that's left out there. We can just all put it to that catch-all. Um, but this here, since it's on this particular agenda. Um, we could reallocate this twenty-five hundred dollars to another. Project, not the behavioral care, but a different project that would not necessitate a special budget board. We'd need the budget board because we're gonna have to move it from here over to PBA, right? But if it stays in the fourteen fifteen account for a.
Burial and cremations.
For a, a purpose that we already have in fourteen fifteen, I don't think it would take budget board action, right?
Right, if it can stay in the fourteen fifteen account, it does lead us to an additional question though, so you have a handful of projects. With very, very small, that like nickel and dime amount that's gonna end up rolling back because the projects have not fully encumbered. So you have like twenty-five dollars on a project and that is associated with a specific project and that will have to be rolled back to fourteen fifteen at some point anyway. To be reallocated, so I, even if you move this into fourteen fifteen, we're gonna run into the same issue.
So, so my point, I, I think what, what I'm thinking is. We don't need to do anything on this right now, we, we think that we're gonna have twenty-five hundred, but who knows, something may come up. Let's just leave the twenty-five hundred dollars in that account. So we're not having to jump through hoops and maybe make a mistake by rushing on that. Just leave it in that account for that project and then after January, when, once we get into January. If we don't need it in that account, we can treat it just like any of the others and we can move it from that account. To another account for another specific purpose that was already approved as an ARPA project, is that not correct?
You are correct in the processing, the caveat on this twenty-five hundred dollars is it's not encumbered, it's not in the contract.
Okay.
So for anything that was already has a contract in place, absolutely, this is not part of the total contract amount.
Did you say there is other, what would your recommendation be that we could put it towards?
Well, I mean, since we're already here and we are going to have to be preparing budget board language and BOCC language, you could still move it. Today into fourteen fifteen saying that you want it to go into the agreement and I can still amend the agreement to include this. And we can make that transfer at Budget Board on Thursday saying pending the BOCC approval on Friday.
Yeah, but that's.
That's.
That's a little bit risky, I mean, I don't, I don't think that, I wouldn't anticipate Budget Board would not approve that, but you never know for sure. Um, yeah, yeah. I mean, we do contingent motions and, and, and I get that, but I don't know on this one, I'm of the mind, let's just, um. Let's just move the, let's reallocate the twenty-five hundred dollars that is currently unencumbered for Drainage Culvert inventory. Let's move that over to the burial and cremation project, ARPA project that's already been approved, that is a fourteen fifteen. Item. Yeah, but we'll have BOCC on Friday, it won't necessitate a special. Yeah, but we'll have BOCC on Friday, it won't necessitate a special budget board or BOCC meeting.
On the nineteenth, and then we can vote on it.
Yeah. Because the, we don't know for sure on the burial and cremation, it may go up, it may go down, and we, we can always reallocate money later if we need to.
And you may have to do it under the more general discussion item, but it, would that be a motion you would like to use as well for anything that Chantel and I find over the next couple of days that needs to come out of a project that will roll into fourteen-fifteen, going ahead and moving it into burial and cremations as well, so it doesn't have to go through Budget Board?
What were those amounts?
I don't have them all yet. I know for a fact on like your CVI project, you've got twenty-five dollars and some change, and then some of your other ones, the same thing, they just, they're, they're not gonna have, they don't have an encumbrance in place, which means they're not gonna have it expended, so we're gonna just go ahead and move it out.
Well, the, the problem is, this agenda item is specifically referencing
Yes.
ARPA project one zero zero six eight.
I think we can do it under-
But, but that being said, oh, what were you gonna say?
I think we can do it under ten, which is our program report.
Okay. I was gonna say, we could always just put it on BOCC without a recommendation as well, but-
And we can discuss it under ten, because we've made motions out of-
Yeah, so, so let's discuss that at ten. On item eight, I'll make a motion that we recommend BOCC reallocate the twenty-five hundred dollars from the Drainage Culvert inventory project, dollars that are currently unencumbered into the previously approved burial and cremation project. Now, is that going to necessitate redoing that agreement?
But I can put it on BOCC as well.
Well, that's what I thought, I was gonna mention, if so, let's make sure that we get that on BOCC for Friday.
Yes.
Okay, wait a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and then the next one is our court clerk, social distancing.
You can go ahead and strike this.
Okay, I'll motion to strike.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And then number ten is the discussion and action regarding policies, processes, and procedures, and update on ARPA.
We do have a report today, as, as usual, but if we want to, since we were already thinking about it, talk about the motion we had just discussed on September eight, about moving the funds from projects that have unencumbrances that will move into fourteen-fifteen into burial and cremations, we could start there, and then I can jump in, because our report's a little bit long today.
But you don't have the amounts on those, but they, you said they're minimal?
Yes, yes. If something were, if we were to find something egregious, we would let you know, but as of right now, everything is tiny, tiny dollars amounts.
Yeah, I'm-
Cremation.
Yeah.
And you'll, we'll know that dollar amount by BOCC to include in the MOU agreement. So if you feel that it would be too much or something, we could address it at BOCC as well.
Okay.
And I'll have that information to you prior, so.
Okay, yeah, I'll make a motion that any of the remaining unencumbered dollars in the fourteen-fifteen account that are small in nature, that you and Chantel find in the next couple of days that have just been overlooked, that those dollar amounts be recommended to be moved into the burial and cremation project. And those dollar amounts, once you get that, they'll need to be added with that twenty-five hundred to that sub recipient agreement.
Absolutely.
That's my motion.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oops. My motion for you. Was that on?
No, we're-
Done, okay.
Oh, you've been doing it for me, thank you. I thought we were still old school.
I felt upset. Okay.
We do have a presentation, are you able to pull up the? All right, so as we have been talking quite a bit today about those final remaining encumbrances, one of the items that has always been on the radar is this deadline at the end of this year, this, the December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, making sure everything is encumbered. And while Cody has been here the whole time, Jessica and Paul, you have not had the pleasure of being here from start to finish. And so we wanted to talk a little bit today about the positive impact that these ones have had in your community, and also how did we get here? Because some of those things you guys weren't even really a part of to, to get to understand. So just kinda wanted to do a little what I'm calling a SLFRF rewind, which are, is your state and local fiscal recovery fund. We'll talk quickly about our fund status, and then we have some project overviews as well. So as you guys are well aware, as you have continued to make decisions on where these projects will get funding, there has been a massive generational investment across Oklahoma, across the country, on including funds. And as a state that, or as a county that does not get to keep a lot of your tax revenue, it was incredible to see these dollars really come into Oklahoma County for addressing these public health emergencies and these negative economic impacts. And as a board, both y'all selves and then previously have done a really, really incredible job of making sure these funds have made it out into the community. As you can even see is our little step and repeat over here, which is outdated at this point, with your first round of sub recipients, which has grown by twofold since we did that workshop. So as an organization, you received a little over a hundred and fifty-four million dollars, and to kind of decide where are these funds going to go in our community, we went ahead and did several community engagement sessions. So this was our initial listening sessions of understanding, what are the pain points in Oklahoma County? What are each of the constituencies and each of the districts feeling is the needs? So on top of that, we did some countywide surveys, those were issued at those listening sessions, and they were also provided QR codes and emails, so that they could send it out to people in the community who were not able to attend. And then, of course, we did application workshops for individuals who wanted to apply in the portal, and those were held both in person and online. So making sure everybody really got an opportunity to be involved and have a say in ARPA. So we really did wanna highlight that this investment in Oklahoma County has really truly created a long-term economic resilience plan, and really built up your comprehensive public services here in the county. And just kind of a quick overview is how this has gone as growth for the county as a whole. Some of the really positive impacts that have been made, community-wide, are those increases in your services for mental health and substance abuse. So that is including things like inpatient and outpatient treatments. This is your Edmund Al, Urgent Care Center that was created. You have been talking about drug rehabilitation programs, we have telehealth programs, both in the JJC and outside in the community as well. And of course, this will do wonderful things related to recidivism in the county, when we are able to get the behavioral healthcare center built. We have also done quite a bit with affordable housing, that is through not only your home finance authority, but also through things like legal aid, who are working on eviction prevention, and places like the Divergent Hub, who help with rent and utility assistance for those that are unhoused. Also, a massive reduction in food insecurity, there were several mobile meal programs, whether it was for grocery delivery or actual meal delivery. And then also, you have put quite a bit of it into food pantries and the regional food bank as well. And then again, touching on that recidivism, which ties greatly back into your mental health, but also has some other programs in your community, such as your CVI program, that you have with the sheriff's office and with the JJC. But then you also have organizations like Reemerge, which helps mothers that are in the criminal justice system, and then things like BlueJ, that is a innovative app to help law enforcement. That picture is from our ribble mapping workshop, which is where these little step and repeats come from, where we were able to work with the current sub recipients at the time, to get a feel for how they have been interacting with the community as they've been able to implement the funds through their organizations. So this is just quickly, again, how did we get here? That first little tiny box you'll see at the bottom, where it says spending management, is when we first came in and we said, here is how we're seeing funds used around the state of Oklahoma, and here's how it might be beneficial in Oklahoma County, and how you might wanna offset places where other entities were not making those improvements. We went ahead and did the compliance framework, which included a grants monitoring framework in that as well, since there is several requirements, of course, that go along with operating and using federal funds. We, of course, always do our annual reporting, we have our application guidebook that we put together for when individuals were going through the application process, and then our ongoing compliance webinars, which we continue to do with our new and old subs. So just looking at the big picture for your internal projects, so that is just your agency projects here in the county, there was a hundred and seventy-five submissions in that portal for the county. In the first round of community applications, there was a hundred and forty-seven, in the second round, there was two hundred and eighty-six. So overall, you have reviewed six hundred and eight total projects, and had to siphon down which ones we're gonna receive funding, which was definitely an extraordinary challenge. I'm gonna breeze quickly through fund status, since a lot of this is going to change, and part of it is, don't be scared when you see your items that are not obligated. This is solely due to the fact that your budget board and your BOCC are going to be at the end of the week. So they just haven't gone through all of the steps yet, and it included the behavioral health facility. So those will all take care of themselves, so we're not gonna spend a lot of time on that. But we'll give you an updated report on it when I send everything at the end of this week. So walking through, again, just the powerful impacts that have been ongoing in this community per your expenditure categories. So you have public health as one of the top ECs that the county has used. On the right, you'll see these are the areas in which most of the funding was received in those. So for, you know, testing, PPE, contact tracing, your medical expenses through the county benefits plan, and then, of course, mental health and substance use services as well. These are some of our pictures from site visits, as you can see the sheriff with their CVI programs, and then also these improvements to your congregate settings that are ongoing, and as well, that is the Edmund Urgent Care's facility that was being built, that is offering medical treatment for behavioral and mental health services. So done a great amount under each of these, tons of PPE tests, or PPE and COVID testing kits. Again, those improvements to the facilities, we have done quite a bit in contact tracing here in the county. Massive, massive improvements and funds for the mental, uh, mental health programs. And then again, community violence, which will really help with reduction of recidivism. We wanted to do a quick, quick spotlight on each of these ECs, just kind of pulling out a main theme. These are relatively straightforward, so you're testing, you ordered a set number of tests, you're contact tracing, you installed a set number of cameras. And then in your prevention to congregate settings, that's just a rough estimate on how many individuals come in and out of the building every day. Same here, we're talking a little bit about PPE, so it's your total number of masks, your total number of gloves. And then we are talking about medical expenses. So this has been things like COVID claims reimbursements in the county for your employees. There has been over eleven thousand COVID medical claims reimbursed. So that's really, really helpful to the county as a whole and everyone's overall health. And then you do have, have completed seven cremation services, which is a number that will now continue to grow over the next few years, since there has been additional funding put into that. Something to keep in mind is that with your public health expenses, you have helped the City of Luther in procuring EMS services. So that helps about roughly fifteen hundred people in that community, making sure that they can get emergency services as soon as they are needed. Again, we have talked quite a bit over the past few years about your community violence intervention. So you do have two internal county programs, but did wanna highlight your Reemerge program, which is working with those women that are in, in the incarcerated community. And due to this funding, they're able to serve about twenty-five additional women a year, which is really, really incredible. And then your Middel Youth and Family Services is providing technology access to individuals who have experienced domestic violence. So this is providing them with a cell phone and helping them get to a safe place. You also have additional mental health services as relates to Make-A-Wish Foundation, because you are able to help them in their reduction of their overall operational expenses. They're able to grant what they call More Wishes for those in our community that need to have that little bright spot. And then your Genesis Project as well, they have been able to make adoptions for residential care to expand the number of people they are over, able to serve over the life of the grant. So really making a lot of improvements and being able to touch additional people that would not have received services otherwise. Continuing on, talking about your substance use. Integris Health has provided financial assistance, and will continue to provide financial assistance for individuals who are going through substance use treatment. And you provide this at low to no cost, at a minimum of twenty individuals per year. So again, people getting help that they wouldn't have otherwise had. And then you do have Peaceful Family Solutions, that is implementing some therapeutic day camps, which will take about twenty children, and they're looking at doing two camps. So overall, about forty children with their, their grant funds. Your HAU, which is your Health Alliance for the Uninsured, which recently just received some additional funding as well. In just the short amount of time that they had with their thirty-three thousand dollars, which has been increased since then, they were able to serve almost four thousand people. So we will continue to see that number as grow as well, along with your County Indigent Pharmacy, the number of individuals that will be able to receive their medication assistance at no cost. Jumping into EC two, so that gets us through kind of your highlights of what have you done in public health, and it has ranged from everything from true COVID and medical expenses and substance use and things like that. But also, we have done quite a bit in this community when it relates to your negative economic impacts. So this is where we'll talk a little bit about your food assistance program, your affordable housing programs, and how you have addressed inequities between communities and the, those other residents in them. So here, as you can see, your main key points are your food programs, rental and utility assistance. There has been assistance to unemployed or underemployed workers, and this has also included individuals who have disabilities. You have worked on long-term housing and quite a bit of assistance to nonprofits. You can see the Community Health Center there is one of the items that you were able to provide funding for, to help renovate their school that they bought, so that they could provide community services. You provided marketing and retention opportunities for the First Americans Museum, which is the cute little turtle in that left-hand corner. The Hope Transportation Services was able to procure a van to help those that are disabled or a little bit older, get their services throughout the community. Below that is just another picture of FAM. Below that one is your services for Reemerge, and so you were able to help them as well with some of their settings. And then again, on the right, we're talking about the Care Center, which has been really impactful in helping your youths in this community that have gone through unfortunate circumstances. All right, so as we had mentioned, you have put quite a bit of emphasis into your food programs. And just over the past eight months or so, the Regional Food Bank has been able to serve nearly eighteen thousand households with that funding. They still have a little bit that they're left to expend, so that will even continue to grow as well. And then with Restore OKC, that is the same thing as well, they've been able to provide food to eight thousand families. So that is really exciting. Overall, going into your rent and utility aid, legal aid will be able to provide a hundred households with eviction prevention assistance. So this is, if they're going through a court proceeding or need some arbitration, they'll be able to help get them through that process and hopefully keep them in their homes. And then your Sparrow Project is working towards providing rent, rent-controlled households for forty-five different families. Moving into your unemployed and underemployed workers, you have the Dale Rogers Training Center. So this is going to be a business incubator for those that have disabilities. So they're working on how do you run your own business, and how do you become successful in your own business? They are still in kickoff phase of that project, but really excited to see how those programs end up at the end. And then for your Opportunities Investment community, they have provided a short-term tech training for twenty adults. Jumping into your healthy childhood environment, so there has been sixty households that will be served through a 111 project. And the way that they provide care into the community is through requests that are submitted through what is called their care portal. So these are families that would be asking for things anywhere from a stroller to, we need food assistance. So they're able to grant those asks through the portal at at least sixty households. We have also increased affordable housing through the access of new homes in your community. And these are not comprehensive numbers, I have just pulled, you know, highlights. So this is only two of your projects, Housing for Community will create six new single-family homes, and Turning Point will have twenty-two. But you have several other affordable housing projects, this is just high level. You will also have some services for those that are transitioning into housing, that have been experiencing homelessness. That will be under your two-point-sixteen EC, and that is going to be provided by CZU. Continuing forward, continued housing support, and this is a really interesting incubator program that was offered by the Northeastern Oklahoma Renaissance. So what they have done is they have worked with individuals in their community on how to be a part of a real estate program, and how to rehab houses, so that they can in the future either run a service where they could offer that to others in order to have their own business and offer rehabilitation assistance, but also walks them through what is that process of getting a loan? How does the grant process work and things like that? So really comprehensive and start to finish in the home buying and home fixing process. Your Community Health Center has created the Highland Park Family Medical Center, so that they are able to serve more individuals in your community as well. And then you have made some really strong neighborhood improvements, as well, as in the City of Bethany, you were able to replace about three hundred feet of sidewalks. As in the city of Bethany, you were able to uh replace about three hundred feet of sidewalk and some water meters in that community. So people have access to clean water. And the improvement of this sidewalk created ADA compliance for a walkable community. So the individuals can walk to places like um their grocery store or to the gym and things like that. So keeps those um in that community active and healthy. You have also been able to provide um operational uh funds to Christmas Connection. And in order uh for them to make those improvements, they have now been able to offer more services to those that are coming through to provide um the gifting for. So by covering those operational costs, they're able to do more with their mission. Field in Future, which is under uh two-point-two-four, is going to be putting in a baseball field at one of the local high schools. Um and it is a Title One school, so that's very important as well, making sure everybody is included in sports and activities. You have uh some more addressing some educational disparities, and this is talking a little bit about the general outcome of this rather than a specific project. The general outcome of all of the ones in this are making those improvements to educational outcomes to students. And it could be through things like tutoring, sorry, tutoring, uh school program, and there is also competence coaching and otherwise. We're almost done with you, with that, with E C two. Uh again, still talking a little bit about addressing some of those educational disparities. We have Urban Bridge, who is coming in and doing some mental health and wellness programs uh and promotes holistic wellness options as well in your community. You have the Care Center, which I highlighted at the beginning uh with their picture. They have provided a hundred and twenty-two counseling sessions and have had eighty-three wellness exams for those youth in your community that have needed those additional services when experiencing a family violence. Um and they have not fully expended their funds yet either, so that number will also continue to grow, which is very exciting to see um how much they're able to do. They were also able to bring in a bilingual coordinator, which has been very important in how they're able to interact with the community. And then we have a little bit of money that has gone towards your tourism um and travel industry. So this is mostly your state fair and then uh the First Americans Museum. And this again is just kind of bringing more people into Oklahoma County, making sure that all of these dollars that have gone into Oklahoma County are bringing more people here and keeping more funds here as well. So that gets us through E C two. Uh we'll go through E C three, uh but I will continue to move fast, if not even a little faster. Um these are ones are gonna be projects you guys are very well familiar with, cuz either the ones that have stayed mostly within the county system. So you've done a lot with your public sector workforce. There has been some effective service delivery and of course subst- substantial administrative needs. So here you can see Luther Fire was able to procure a fire engine. Uh and that will help with their community in need of services, whether it's EMS or fire. And then you have your radio project, so this is when they were first testing some of those new equipments. And then above that is the Detention Center roof and then the loading dock. So those are all things that have had improvements throughout this community as well. With E C three-point-one, that was your uh payroll and benefits for the Sheriff's Department. So really providing funds to the department because they had that high uh increase in time spent responding to COVID. And then talking about Luther Fire again, they were able to obtain that uh fire engine, which will serve about fifteen hundred people. And then on the I T administrative side of things, you've increased your abilities to protect with cybersecurity improvements and some structural facility improvements across the county as well. This is one that is something I don't even know if Paul would be aware of that the county did, since it's been such a long time. Uh we were able to offer a one-time stipend to your employees here in Oklahoma County. Were compensated uh for those efforts. So there was a one-time stipend for six hundred and sixty-nine county workers uh thanks to their hard work all through the pandemic. Touching a little bit on your infrastructure projects, this is going to include your drainage culvert inventory, uh which is really important for understanding how your runoff and your rainwater is going to come into the county and making sure it doesn't impact any of your drinking water systems. And then again, the city of Bethany had an additional project, and this implemented two hundred and sixty new water meters in that community. Your revenue replacement dollars, just touching on them lightly, uh these have been used to enhance your community and very importantly, have been used for your uh H V A C at the detention center, making sure that health and safety improvement is made for those that are in the community. Our last one here is E C eight, which is your natural disasters. So this was for the Deer Creek Community. They were able to bring in a generator service that would help uh their department, their fire department in the case of any emergency, especially things like tornadoes that happen so frequently here in Oklahoma County. I know that was super fast, um and I know it was a lot of things, but it has been a long three years. And I wanted everyone to really be able to grasp and look back at how much of a positive impact this has had in Oklahoma. So if you have questions.
Thank you so much, Danielle. I didn't even know about some of those things, cuz obviously they were before my time, so I appreciate your time.
Absolutely.
Danny, thanks for everything. Um. It's been a.
Long three years. Happy to be here.
But as, as your slide uh presentation showed, we've, we've done a lot of really good things. Um we've had some really good help from, from you guys consulting.
Thank you.
Um as, as well as um folks here in the county um working very, very hard uh to try to meet needs. And there were definitely more needs than that could be met. We all did the best that we could to um to make the situation uh as good as possible. But I really appreciate all the time that you guys have spent and will spend in the future, right?
Yeah, not going anywhere yet.
Now it's the um, the accounting side, right? The, the fun stuff. Um I would say one thing for all of us to kind of keep in mind, Brandy is still here, so I want her to hear this as well. Um from a budgeting standpoint, we've been really careful throughout when we spend these dollars that we're spending them kind of in a one-time nature and not in ongoing expenses that the county's gonna have to try to fill budget holes in the future with. The one potential exception there is the burial and cremation. If it is determined in the future that we still have that obligation, not a, not discretionary, but we have to do that in the future, I think that's one thing that we need to keep in mind down the road is we may um need to budget for that particular service from general fund dollars down the road. I just wanted to kind of throw that out, cuz we didn't really have that discussion before, cuz we were trying to get that program going, cuz we needed to, to kind of get it off a high center. So just as a kind of uh a bookmark in your brain for down the road, we may need to trust that.
You guys have done a incredible job of ensuring that there was no continued ongoing cost for the county um leaving any holes in the community. So uh a great, it was great foresight to do the, the one-time cost. And I'd be remiss if I didn't highlight the uh appreciation we have for you guys and your whole staffs and teams and the decisions you have had to come to face. And uh Chantel, who has been our rock through uh the accounting por- portion of things, but also all of your department heads. We've worked with almost every single one of your department heads, whether it was vetting a project, telling them yes or no, um or just being around to listen. So really couldn't have done it without this community as a whole. And Jamie and I have had the privilege of going on these site visits and getting to hear from your subrecipients. And I know you guys don't get to hear it all the time, but they are so extremely grateful for this um and all of the dollars that have gone into the community. So really, really, it's been great.
Jamie, thank you as well. It's, it's been great getting to know you guys as well, yeah. Chantel, everybody that's been involved in this.
And the one thing I'll add to Cody, cuz we saw this with, we have a lot of uh clients after ARA. And so they made one-time investments, and so now you're seeing ten, fifteen years after ARA in two thousand and eight, where they made a, a large purchase in vehicles or a large pers- purchase in buildings. That all of that now is becoming outdated ten, fifteen years later. So I think the other thing that we also keep eye on is where you guys made a large investment with something, not putting you in a hole ten years from now when they all are, need to be fixed at the same time. So whoever's here in ten years will help them um remember that.
I will move that we receive that report.
Thank you.
And I'll push my button.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next is number.
It was like in high school when you're graduating and you're seeing the video of everything that's happened, that's kind of what that was.
I actually had a lot of fun putting it together. It took me quite a bit of time, but I was like, wow, we've done a lot. And going through some of our old deliverables and things like that, it, I had even forgotten on some of the things that we had done. So it was, it's kind of a cool reflection for me, so I'm glad I got to share it with y'all.
Even back to when we were interviewing perspective, you know, um folks to do what you're doing for us, yeah, so.
I was impressed in the presentation, even looking back at the documentation and documents that you've provided and how we've grown and evolved in providing resources for the county, but on, in regards to reporting, but not, not only for the county, but for the community in regards to um how to apply for these grants and, and resources that we can make available on our website. So it's, it was neat to see that evolution of the different uh presentations and, and documents you've created.
Thank you.
Um really appreciate that. And the ripple mapping was um an incredible experience to see, you know, the true impact and how it, you know, reaches, you know, so many different nonprofit organizations and serves such great needs. So thank you.
Absolutely.
Um both, I'll echo both Cody and, and Paul in uh your efforts. Uh it's been a joy working with you, and we'll look forward to the next two years to come. So number eleven is Discussion Possible Action Regarding the Adoption of the Memor- Memorandum Understanding to the Subrecipient Agreement between the Board of County Commissioners and Dale Ro- Rogers Training Center. So this is just um changing the date to align with regulatory framework. Do I have a motion?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Same for number twelve.
Yes.
Um a M O U between the B O C C and the Oklahoma County Criminal Justice Authority um updating their dates to align with uh regulatory framework.
Yep.
Motion? All motion?
Move, yeah, same.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Is there anything else?
I don't think I have anything else, but if you do, let me know.
We appreciate it.
Absolutely, I'll be in the.
And then we will go back to number four. Yes, uh which is the Discussion on Possible Action Regarding Any Potential Changes Surrounding Job Titles, F L S A Status, and Job Description, um just details in the current grant writer and B O C C Financial Administrator Assistant.
I know we're revisiting this again, but the first time the job descriptions were, the changes were submitted to P and G. I was more, since I had, was new to the job, I really didn't have a lot of the background that was going on. So since then, I have had long discussions with both Nikki and Miranda. Uh I've done kind of a deeper dive into F L S A to look at this a little more. And I had just come up with what I thought, believe me, it's up for discussion. Uh what I thought was some recommendations on uh their jobs.
All motion to receive. The document? All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Oh, sorry, he's done off.
Did I give you two?
Sorry. Okay, I got two.
You got two?
I've got one. I have the B O C C Financial Support Specialist.
So basically, there was little to nothing uh that was done in terms of the essential duties and responsibilities. I just added a little more primarily to the uh qualifications. And um in looking at F S L A and their different categories, uh I believe that they both positions uh qualify as exempt status under the, under the administrative portion. Uh both of them, I mean, I will be happy to read this straight from F S L A. Uh the administrative portion, for folks who qualify as exempt status is employees who perform non-manual work directly related to management policies, such as executive assistants or advisory specialists uh to, to management and generally do not perform production work and have the authority and power to make independent judgments and exhibit discretion. An example of those is um individuals who act in an advisory capacity to management. And I think both of those positions do that.
Yeah, I've since had a discussion with H R and I, I'd spoken with Joe. We were under the impression that H R had analyzed both these positions as non-exempt. After talking to H R, I think they believe that they can be classified as exempt, so we're fine with that. We were under the thought that they were, that they needed to be non-exempt. Non-exempt status is a protection to the employee. So I'm always going to um fall on the side of caution when it comes to that, because it's there for a reason. Exempt status is actually a lower status when it comes to protection uh in the federal law. So I wanna make sure if there's any gray area, we're gonna protect our employees and classify them as non-exempt, right? But my understanding now, after talking to H R, is that they're comfortable that these positions can be uh considered, they don't have to be. Because any exempt position, you could always classify it as non-exempt to give the additional protections to the employee if you so choose. But after having conversations with H R, I, I'm fine with them being exempt. I was under the other impression before, so.
We also checked with H R, and I know that Karen had reached out to Marla with our state auditors, and she did confirm that they would qualify for exempt status as well. So we should be good there. And I'm.
Okay. And I know there has been discussions with all parties involved as to the titles of these actual positions. Do you, I put my recommendation on there. Do you have any, any feedback or discussion that you've concluded there?
Oh, you wanna speak as, Paul, she, I want you to speak.
She can't hear you.
Oh. I'm sorry, can you not hear me? Can you hear me now? Feel like the sprint guide now.
Okay.
And so I've also had discussions with um both Nikki and Miranda in regards to the titles. Um and wanting to make sure that they feel supported, that they don't feel like that was a reduction in um, in duties. Um that, you know, it was never punitive, it was just um something that was discussed. Um and so, and that they feel like they're being supported and that this, you know, it, that, that these titles are still at the same level of what um their roles consisted before. And so in those discussions, we had discussed um a Grants Manager and B O C C Financial um Manager, because they are managing grants and are managing our um uh funds and budgets. Uh and so that was something that we had discussed. But now um in your proposing specialist, and I'm, I'm open, but I just wanna make sure that since it did cause so much concern in regards to the job description um and um comfortability in moving forward, that both of you two feel heard. And so I welcome you to come up and advocate for that or discuss, you know, you know, between those two. I know this has been a lot, there's been a lot of discussions since the last policy governance meeting.
I just wanna start off by saying thank you guys so much for all of your consideration and all of the work that you guys done to, to put forth for trying to make these changes for our, um for our descriptions and for our titles and for our exemptions to protect us so that we can be better employees of the county. Um I wanna support you guys in whatever it is that, that you would like to do. Um if I had a choice in any of all of this, um I would, would love for it to stay the exact same. Um if that's not an option, I would love for us to lean towards the manager title. Um I think that that would work best. I don't wanna speak for Miranda. Um but I, I feel like w- we are in management positions where we are managing certain aspects of our, our jobs. And um it would be nice if we had that recognition in our title. And so um I respect you guys, I respect everything that you guys have done and the decisions that you guys make. Um but um just thank you for, for consideration. Thank you for revisiting Paul and the thank you, thank you Jessica for taking the time to speak to me. Um thank you Cody for taking the time. I know that you spent time on, um you spent extra time after work um putting together a job description, and I appreciate that and, and, and I recognize that and I see that and I, and I appreciate that. So whatever happens here today, I support everyone. Um I think that I've pretty much um relayed my message to everyone how I feel about this. And um I look forward to the work that I get to do for the county going forward. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
I don't know how I follow that. Uh she covered everything very well. I'm comfortable with either a manager or specialist position. And again, I, I also appreciate the reevaluation and the work that's. And again, I, I also appreciate the reevaluation and the work that's gone into it from all of you. Um, we, I know I can't speak for Nikki, but I do feel supported and heard. I'm very grateful for that. Um, so really whatever happens today, I'm, I'm happy to do the work going forward.
Thank you.
That's all. Thank you all.
Thank you.
So this is my first and, and best practices for HR, having to do this in, in a, a, a public meeting. And, and I know that this, you know, has been a little bit challenging in regards to the timeframe that it has taken, um, in order for us to come to a decision on what this looks like moving forward. Um, when I was thinking about it, driving, um, into work today, I was just thinking about how, um, qualified and dedicated and, um, uh, just what a great job that you both are doing, um, in your roles and that we really appreciate and value that. And so, um, unfortunately, we were unable to discuss this in an executive session where we could all three, um, talk to both, you know, you individually. And so, um, I think it is important, since we can't all three sit down with you in order for you to be able to, to, you know, have a word to say. So I appreciate you taking the time to do that.
So, first of all, I, I mentioned my stance on these in versus non-exempt. That's fine. Um, Jessica, to, you know, what you were saying earlier about a, a demotion of or whatever. I, I think, I want to be clear, especially as it relates to the grants position. BOCC did not have a grants anything. Administrator, writer, specialist, nothing. We, we didn't have a grants, uh, position. The county had one at one point and then it went over into the county clerk's office. And BOCC decided to go ahead and handle grants from the BOCC side. When we decided to do that, the discussion was, we will take a little bit of time to determine what the job description and the title and all that was going to be. So if, this is a new BOCC thing. So whether it's a demotion or a promotion, it's really neither. It is the beginning of what the BOCC position is, right? I, I just want to be clear on, on that. I'm fine with the title Grant Specialist. I, I get what you're saying Nikki about you're managing this, but we all manage our, our own stuff. You're not managing any people or anything like that at this point, right? Um, I, I, I think that I, I'm fine with the Grant Specialist. I'm fine with the BOCC Financial Support Specialist. That language is fine. I, I do have a question. You've got the Grant Specialist as safe, safety sensitive, but the BOCC Financial Support Specialist as not safety sensitive. I don't know why there would necessarily be a difference in either of those. It's front page at the top.
Oh, I did not change that. That's the way it was before.
Okay. Is that how those were?
I don't, I.
Because we were utilizing the old one and, and, yeah, those need to be the same.
Same. So what is your recommendation on safety sensitive, Karen?
The reason, the reason and the difference between those is that the grants position travels, goes to meetings offsite quite a bit. The financial, uh, position does not. They are pretty much right here in the county. And anybody that drives for the county in the capacity, we've pretty much tried to get those as safety sensitive.
Well, we talked about this the other day though. The, on the grant side, we have one grants person. There's, this isn't a travel and doing that. They're here just like everybody else. So I think if the BOCC Financial Support Specialist is not safety sensitive, I, I don't see our Grant Specialist traveling and doing stuff anymore than our BOCC Financial Support Specialist.
Okay. If that's what you want to do, I'm good with that either way.
So, I mean, I just think they either both need to be safety sensitive or both not because I don't see much of a distinction between either of them. They're both dealing with, uh, significant secure financial data.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So, I, I mean, if.
That was the only reason.
Then they both do.
It was that I knew the grants traveled some and she drove to meetings and offsite and everything.
Yeah, I, this is just a district one viewpoint standpoint. The, the grants, right now, where we are, i- is the infancy of doing grants in Oklahoma County. It needs to be focused on internal county departments, county elected officials. We don't, that position, whoever's in that position does not need to be traveling to, to meetings and all that kind of stuff. It needs to be internal focus.
Okay.
At this point. Now, that could change. If we have three or four people in there, maybe we, you know, maybe it's big enough that, that we can do that, that extra stuff. But right now, I think the focus needs to be internal.
Okay.
Well, did I move that we?
Well.
Well, let's, let's continue up through this because there's information added in regards to the ARPA compliance team. I was, I was really comfortable with the, and I appreciate, um, D1 in regards to your time, Cody and, and Joe, in regards to making sure that the job descriptions were consistent, that they met, you know, the, the guidelines of what we want them to look like moving forward. I believe the only thing that, um, that, you know, I was willing to, to, to visit further about, of course, was the job title. Um, safety sensitive since we've looked at that. And then, of course, the exempt versus the non-exempt. Um, but what other, could you tell us what other changes you made specifically to what Joe and, what we approved at the last policy and governance meeting?
I do have copies of those previous job descriptions. If y'all would like to have those to look at to compare.
I did put on there on essential duties and responsibilities. Nope. For example, on, on Miranda's position, no changes to what was approved at P and G except those two things that we're moving the add right there. On the other one, same thing. No changes to what was approved at P and G.
Okay, so on grants, no changes. Put on this one, remove coordinates. Oh, this is Nikki. You just had, don't have it under Nikki's.
Okay, so let me make sure that I am clear because some places it says no changes and then some places it has a bunch of information. So let's just look at Grant Specialist for a second.
Yeah.
Um, beyond the top stuff, the, the title and, and all of that. No changes to the expectations, essential duties and responsibilities. Did you make any, are these all additional changes, all these bullet points?
No, they're not additional. Some were simply reworded. There were a couple that were added. Uh, you'd have to compare them to the other one that was presented to P and G the first time.
Yeah.
And you now have copies of those?
I do, but, I mean, I, I mean, you know me, I'm not a, a read and react. I'm a read and ponder and react and then ponder again and then maybe react. Um, I, I.
Well, we can, if you want, at this meeting, we can simply go back and make much to review these and then approve at the next one.
I, well, I have, so my only concern about that is we've been doing this for how long? Eight months? And, and we're to the point where really we need to make a decision. And I know that you're just now coming in and, um, and we're grateful you're here. But it's just not good practices for us to spend this much time in this long of a duration. Now granted, a portion of that was, and I do respect Joe a lot for taking a moment to pause because he was coming back from being, um, in surgery for several months. And so that's kind of what alluded to some of this duration of, of kind of leaving everyone hanging in regards to jobs, these job descriptions. But we really need to, um, move forward and be able to provide direction. And so I would hate to continue to push. And so.
I'm ha, I'm happy with the, it sounds like you're happy with the old language with the exception of some of the changing the job titles on both to Grant Specialist and changing to BOCC Financial Support Specialist.
Yeah, exempt.
Change both positions to exempt and both positions to non-safety sensitive. Is that correct?
Okay.
Yeah, we gotta. We're gonna move on from here.
And Karen, I, I know before it, this didn't mention anything in here, but I, I just wanted to, to make sure. I know on the document that we had provided, it hadn't, you, they report, both of those positions report to you for time and all of that.
Yes, sir. That is correct.
They're both exempt. So, I mean, it's 40 hours a week and then when they need off or whatever they let you know. Um, and we had in there, the, the business hours are eight to five.
That is correct.
I know your organization is seven thirty to four thirty, correct?
Yes, my staff is seven thirty to four thirty.
Okay, so are you letting these two do seven thirty to four thirty?
That is what I would like to do, just to keep consistency on my timekeeping part.
Do you guys have an issue with, with that? I mean, i- if, I mean, we can always, if there becomes an issue and we need it to be eight to five, we can always just tell Karen to adjust that. But I, I think, I, I think it would be with what they're all doing. I don't necessarily see that we need to make them be, I, I think it should say eight to five in the job description because that, those are the business hours. And if we make the change and tell Karen, hey, you need to have all your folks here eight to five, we don't need to go through and change.
All the job descriptions.
All the job descriptions because it's known that's when you have to be available. Because at any time, the board may tell Karen or whoever else, no, it is the eight to five. You know it's eight. So anyway, I just think it would be fair. I mean, if they want to do eight to five, that's fine. But I think, i- since they're reporting to you for time and everything.
We just to be a consistent for everybody that I do keep time for. Yes.
Okay.
Miranda's nodding her head.
Is that, is that cool with you guys?
Is that cool with Miranda and Nikki?
I think that seven thirty to four thirty because, I mean, we never know when stuff is going to come up and we need stuff taken care, we, we've had this situation happen in the past, not with the grants department, but with other departments where we've needed stuff and then we have to wait until the next day. And it was very time sensitive and we needed information, but that person was working an altered shift and we, we couldn't, um, some people in here remember when that has happened. And it, it cre, it has created issues in the past. So I, I think that the 30 minutes is fine for me, the seven thirty to four thirty. Just knowing that it could go to eight to five, I, I just, I think everybody needs to understand that the hours are eight to five. The director has said seven thirty to four thirty. But if the commissioners change their mind on that, I, I just don't want there to be any surprises. If they tell Karen, hey, your organization and everybody that answers to you needs to be your eight to five, then everybody's aware that that's what it is.
I know that on behalf of my commissioner, um, he had mentioned, um, in previous meetings, e- eight to five. And I think that it should be consistent across all of the, um, job descriptions with accommodations, like you're saying, based off of what the need is or, um, so seven thirty to four thirty. Is that what you're, so, and that's consistent for that department in that area, especially for somebody? But in the job descriptions, I agree, it should be consistent. And then we can make changes. I mean, we did the same thing for who was in the role previously. Um, but I'm, I think the seven thirty to four thirty, since you are doing the timekeeping and that is what's consistent with your department.
Yes, that is correct.
Your department, a lot of it is safety too and.
Yes.
And your HR and our yards operate earlier. Um, and so they have to get out there. And that's really why you've kind of done.
That's why we've done it that way because lots of times we do have to be out of the yard, seven fifteen, seven thirty. But just to kind of keep it balanced out, we did the seven thirty to four thirty.
And since you're responsible for making sure that their hours are tracked and everything, keeping them on the same schedule that you guys are on, I'm fine with that because it makes it easier for you to monitor and verify that, you know, you're the one that's responsible for signing off on their time, right?
That is correct.
So I, I think them working the hours that you're working, it makes it easier for you to track it. So I'm fine with the seven thirty to four thirty since that's what your organization currently is doing. Commissioner Mon, uh, you know, I understand, you know, it's an eight to five. And if Miles or Commissioner Mon wants to push that later or District One, it could change to eight to five. But if it does, it would be for your entire group, not just.
Well, as you know, we are currently reviewing all of our job descriptions for all the BOCC departments. And I think part of the consistency would be to put that eight to five, but we can make a little bit of adjustments as needed for the specific job duties.
Okay.
And then, um, Karen, can you please update the job descriptions and provide us a copy of them?
Yes, I can. I will.
Amendments.
Amendments and make it and see if we can't get agreeable to a final draft.
Final draft and then signatures on those.
Well, I don't, I don't really think it'd be a final draft. I think it's, it'll be the final document because I'll make a motion that the job descriptions be what was approved before with the following changes. The, the grants position, the title will now be, um, titled Grant Specialist. It will be a non-safety sensitive position and it will be an exempt FLSA status. And then the BOCC Financial, um, position, the job title will be BOCC Financial Support Specialist. Uh, safety sensitive will be no and it will be an exempt FLSA status.
Okay. I can do that.
That's my motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that concludes all of our agenda items. Is there any citizen participation?
Hang on real quick. Karen, so you'll, you'll update those job descriptions with the changes that we just made? And do we need to, I don't think we need to see those beforehand because we know exactly what the change is going to be. So make those changes and then meet with Miranda and with Nikki to get their signatures and everything. None of the actual job duties have changed and they've already seen that, right? So they know what, what all that is and they both know now what the changes are, that they're exempt employees, non-safety sensitive and what the title is, so.
Nikki, did you have something? Will you come to the mic? Thank you, so we can hear you.
I've kind of heard you guys speak about me being able to go off campus or being able to stay on campus. So there are several things that I do that pertain directly to my job off campus that requires me to allocate and time manage a few hours out of my day where I'm off campus and then I return to campus. Am I understanding that it's okay for me to do these things or?
Like, give me an example.
For an example, there are, there is a grants collaborative meeting. So where other grant professionals come together and talk about funding. Am I allowed to do that? That is, that is a, the collaborative that we started. Like the, the grants department started. And so there are different grant professionals that meet every third Friday and we talk about different grant opportunities or different partnerships that we might be able to kind of collaborate on whenever we're talking about funding available throughout the state.
Well, I don't know. I, I, I think that.
In addition, just another example that just isn't so, but ACOG. Um, I go to ACOG once a month, the second Thursday. I'm usually gone for about an hour and a half or two and I come back. Um, those are the type of meetings that I kind of have when it pertains to off-campus. If there is something more extensive to where I'm going to be gone for several days in training or something like that, I usually get clearance from, from everyone to make sure that, um, just like the purchasing. I made sure that everyone knew that I was gone. I made sure that everyone knew how long I was gone. And I just kind of, you know, was transparent on the time away, but still available for, for anyone. And that's just kind of how it is now. Like, yes, I may leave at three thirty, but I'm still accepting calls and doing work until the work is done. And some days that looks like five o'clock, some days that looks like four o'clock. I, I just, I just don't know. Um, there are some times whenever I'm working on grants where I, I, I'm, it is outside of the traditional hour, uh, office hours. And I just want to make sure that it's okay for me to, to do these things for, you know, ad hoc and as it goes, yes, but there are standing meetings that I've attended, you know, since the beginning that I'm off campus for a couple of hours and then I'm back on campus.
So I, I think that the focus of the grants office needs to be internally what we can do for Oklahoma County. So for ACOG, for instance, if there is something that's being discussed there that we can ask for, I think it's, there's going to be times where it's going to be good for you to go. But that doesn't necessarily mean every single meeting and not for all five. But that doesn't necessarily mean every single meeting and not for all five hours or whatever that they're, they're, you, you know what I'm saying? So I, I don't necessarily know that our, the, and I'm not talking about Nikki, I'm talking about our grant specialist. Um, I don't necessarily think they need to be at every ACOG meeting. I don't think they need to be at every whatever else. I think they need to be focused on, uh, Treasurers Office. What are you needing? Um, and you're searching out grants and helping them get their grants. District Two, District Three, Court Clerk's Office, focusing internally and not externally.
There, it's, uh, uh, these are for internal purposes. Um, the funding that I've received, most of the funding that I've received has been through these external meetings that I attend for the county. So these are county grants that I'm.
But a lot of those grants that you talked about weren't, weren't, like the, the AG for the sheriffs that you talked about, that wasn't because you were out in a meeting and heard about that. The AG's office sent that to us. A lot of these are coming to us and then you're working them and managing them. And we need our grant specialist to be here, working those and managing those.
Right, right. I understand that, but there's also whenever I'm doing those internal grants for our, that are handed to me, there's work that has to be done off campus. Like I have to go and see a program and how it's run so that I can write a grant on it. I have to go and speak to partners who, that we are collaborating with to receive funding. Like I have to go and see that program and I have to make sure that this program is reflected in the proposal that I submit for funding. So it's not like I can just sit at my desk and just like dream about what a program might be doing or what I think they might be doing. There's a lot of investigative and research work that goes into a proposal whenever you initially start to craft it. You have to go out and you have to interview. You have to go out, you have to see. It's almost like being a receiving officer, receiving funds. Yes, we know that these funds are coming in, but you actually physically need to see those receiving funds to know that you're receiving what you said that you're receiving. And it's kind of the same thought process when you're crafting a proposal. If a program is saying that this is what they do, there is some investigative work that needs to be done where you have to go and kind of see it for yourself.
But generally speaking, what I'm talking about is these would be internal grants, not going out and getting grants for other outside.
No sir, no sir.
So our collaboration should be with the Treasurer's Office.
Yes.
So, and they're here in the building. I mean, I understand, like, the Sheriff's Office and Juvenile is offsite and you're going to need to do that. It, it's a reasonableness aspect to the job. But, I mean, I think it's clear that it's seven thirty to four thirty is what it sounds like. The organization that you're going to be in i- is what the hours are. And then it doesn't necessarily mean that you're not going to be in the building a hundred percent of the time. There are going to be some instances where you may have to, to go offsite. But it should be related to the county's grant and not a grant just because somebody wants a grant, but the county has to be the applicant.
Right.
That's not, uh, and I think we've, in the past, I'm not saying you, but in the past, sometimes we've been focused on that stuff instead of internally what we can get for our juvenile department, what we can get for the Court Clerk's Office, what we can get for our internal county needs. And I think that's what needs to be focused on. Now, I understand, like, a center, when they're looking at our grants that we're giving to outside entities, they've got to go out and check those entities and make sure they're spot checking and making sure they're in compliance and they're doing the things that they need to be doing. But I don't think right now we're giving grants to those types of organizations to where you need to go out and do that kind of stuff.
Well, we actually are. OU is, is one of them. They just pulled back. I understand that, but if we're going to solicit bids for other outside organizations that are not inside of, of, of our internal compass, then w- w- I, I just, I want there to be brevity for us having to ad hoc as we go. It is, it, I understand that this is a new position for the BOCC and for the county and I get that. And I'm simply just trying to relay the information that is going to make this position, not Nikki, but this position successful. And that's all that I'm doing. I'm not trying to make it difficult. I'm not trying to give myself more leeway than anyone else. I'm just trying to make sure that we're all on the same page, that the work that I'm doing, it works and I'm not working outside the scope of my duties. I'm working within the scope of my duties to make sure that the work that I'm putting forth is best practices and is the gold standard. And, and, and that, and that, and that's simply all I'm trying to do is just less muddy the waters when it comes to me having to do the work off campus. I just want to make sure that we're good on that.
Yeah, so I think when we were talking about managing grants, the, the grants manager for the county is this group. And you, the grant specialist reports to this group, right? We, we're managing this for BOCC and we make recommendations up to BOCC. So if this group wants you, and BOCC wants you looking at different entities, whether it's OU or whatever on that, that's going to be one situation. But going out on the front end until this body has said, yes, let's do that, just going out and trying to, you know, to find stuff before you're given direction, that's something different. And, and, and like meetings like CJAC and stuff like that, I don't, I mean, I don't think you need to be going, the grant specialist needs to be going to those meetings and that kind of stuff. That's, those are kind of some of the things that, that I was, thank you.
So what I'm hearing also, and I would concur with, um, Cody, is that, and the reason why, you know, we moved forward the first time with the grant writer is that, and I don't want to speak for Paul. Uh, but at least for our office, we need somebody that is here, that's focusing and researching grants, that's colla- you know, collaborating when needed. Um, when, you know, the sheriff's department is writing a grant and they've been writing this grant for a long time, just making sure that we understand and we have somebody, you know, mutual communication in regards to what that looks like for compliance, you know, being reported here. And that's kind of that framework. But really having somebody that is here at the county, researching what we can do in order to help support our needs internally. Um, right now, maybe this is hopeful, this is not a community facing position. And so this is a position where you're here, you're writing grants, you're focusing on how you can improve infrastructure, you know, improve, um, our, you know, great resources that you just got, you know, with the last grant in regards to some of our dump trucks. Like really trying to determine, um, how to support our needs, um, moving forward. There will be occasions such as the opioid grant that came to us, you know, for us to apply for where the, where there will be community partners. But that's whenever we send out an RFP to invite others to come in and collaborate with us. Um, I don't see a need of going to OU and, you know, seeing their project and, and what's going on with it because we're not part of what, what a center is doing in regards to site visits. And I'm, I mean, there is going to be a compliance, but that's really going to be on their side. We would really invite them here at our BOCC meetings in order to hear from them or P and G meetings to hear, preferably BOCC for the commissioners, to hear the impact and success they're having in their program. And so that's, um, so I, I just want to provide clarification, um, for my department and it sounds like yours in regards to what that expectation is.
What I was saying much better than the way I was saying it, so.
It's just not, it's not community facing at this time. We need to focus on our internal needs. And that is what my commissioner, um, Commissioner Mon, you know, asked, well, what are we doing for D, D two? What are we doing, you know, in order to help our districts? What are we doing to have better communication and compliance amongst our other, you know, sheriff's department? Because ultimately, as the chairman's office, we're responsible for all those grants. And so we need someone like you to be able to help us understand broadly the impact of the, the county. You know, kind of like what Danielle and Jamie just did, the impact that we're, that we're having, um, in all of our communities. But that is really that type of reporting, that type of cl- you know, communication. The framework is very exciting. Um, it's something that's going to take some time and I appreciate your efforts in regards to developing it, um, to where you've, you've created it to where it is now so that way we can start communicating it with the other departments. But I just see you really excelling, um, in regards to being able to pull us all together, have a really good understanding of what we're doing as a county as a whole, the impact that we're making. And so, um, you're doing an amazing job, but we really need you here focused, doing research, um, communicating amongst our departments and, um, you know, really helping us, uh, with a lot of the needs that we have moving forward, especially with, you know, some short faults in our, um, budget.
And I will agree with making one addition. If there is a specific grant that you're working on that requires you to go off campus for whatever reason to s- and you're staying within the framework that you're sending us, then so be it.
I mean, that's how I feel about it. I have not, in my opinion, I don't think that I've worked outside of a grant guideline or the frameworks that I've presented to you in any way at any time. I think that anytime I am off campus, it is because I am working towards a grant that is for our county. Um, I, I, or for our internal partners.
Yeah, I, I think, I don't know specifically off the top of my head, any grants since the OU one didn't, hasn't come to fruition. I don't know of anything other than ACOG that would be something that, right now, I could sit here and say, yes, I think that would be something that you would need to go off for. The other things, I think we need to recognize that if we do authorize a grant. So let's look at the OU one that has not come to fruition. When we talk about that in January or February and we go out for RFPs, we need to probably be specific with, with Nikki or the grant specialist, what, you know, what we want them doing and, and not doing on those. And if it is going to be a grant that is going to require a lot of labor intensive going and spot checking and making sure, then that may be something that we just say, yeah, that's a great grant, but we have one grant specialist. We don't have time to take that on. We need to stay focused internally. That's just too much for us to bite off. So we need to be careful on what we pick and choose and kind of take that responsibility on our side and not throw something on Nikki that she can't manage. Because, you know, if she's having to spend so much time on that and we're like, well, where's our focus internally? Well, I'm focused on this other thing that you had me doing, you know, then we've kind of created that. So, but I, I, I get what you're saying, Paul. I just don't think we've had any grants that are going to necessarily require that.
Well, the REAP grant is for one. Um, the, there, the RAISE grant is another. So, I mean, th- if we go down that list, I can tell you, and I've got a spreadsheet approximately about how many hours I'm working on a grant. And so if we look at those grants and, and, and they're all internal grants, by the way, but if we look at those grants, just the application process alone requires more than me sitting in a chair and on campus. Like, and I get that that's what you guys need and if that's what you want me to do, that's fine. But I'm just letting you know that you're putting restrictions and restraints on me to be able to give you guys the best proposal going forward for us to be able to compete for competitive grants. And I know it may seem like a, a, a really small thing to you guys by me not being able to go out and learn about grants and learn how to do these grants for a county. But it's a big thing. Collaboration, communication, training and, and just being able to have communications and talks with people who actually do what I do is beneficial. And so a restriction on me being able to attend meetings where other grant professionals are talking about funding, it seems like you guys are not setting me up for success. And I'm trying to, to make this position successful. Um, I don't want it to be unsuccessful, whomever is here. I want this position to be successful. And I'm just giving you suggestions on what I've done historically to get to almost five million dollars in two years, what has worked. And if you guys want to change the dynamics of that, then I would like for you guys to at least be prepared that the dynamics of the outcome will change as well. And so if we're wanting to be successful, I'm just trying to provide you guys the framework that has made me very successful in these two years.
So as any new grant opportunity becomes available, uh, is that something that you can come before this panel and say, you know, I think this grant is going to require me to be off campus for this.
Yeah, that's what I was getting at. Yeah. Yeah, but there are some circumstances where a commissioner is not ready for a particular grant to be presented to all three commissioners. And so I have to make sure that I'm honoring that. And by honoring that, sometimes that means that I have to go and do that side work until I have enough information compiled to where I can present it to everyone and say, okay, guys, here, here we are. Here's the grant. This is what we've done. This is what's going on. So sometimes, yes, I can bring it to you if I know the grant. Yeah, I can bring it to you and say, okay, here's a grant. This is what I'm looking at doing and allow you guys to have that judgment to tell me and guide me kind of how it should be. But then there are also times where there are certain times where commissioners aren't ready for me to have that, have all three of you guys kind of judge it and then tell me what to do.
So here's my, my thought on that. That's putting you in a grant manager situation. You're not a grant manager. The three of us are. So I think before you get invested a lot of time and effort into a particular grant, it needs to come here and at least two out of the three make the recommendation that we move forward. That I can see moving forward to be fair to Nikki, just what she just said. There is a grant right now, that grant opportunity, right now that District Three has her investigating. To see whether it, it would be a viable opportunity for us. But in, investigating by, you know, doing some online research and making some phone calls, that's one thing. But investing significant time going offsite and doing all this kind of stuff, if, if District One has, in our mind, a great idea and we have her doing all of this, but there's not going to be anybody else that's going to support that, she's just wasted a whole bunch of time. So I think doing maybe a little bit of front end work to find out what the requirements of the grant are, what type of outcomes we're going to have to track and kind of that, you know, preliminary stuff, I think it's fine for any of us to ask them to do that, just like any other department. You know, whether it's the sheriff's office or whatever, can the, whether it's sheriff, juvenile, treasurer, assessor, um, the emergency management department, whoever can say, hey, can you look at this grant? It, it, do you think this is something that we can do? And, you know, doing a cursory look at it and saying, yeah, I think, you know, this is maybe something that we could do. And then it comes here and we say, yes, let's move forward with that or let's not move forward with that. Do you see, but do you understand what he's saying, Nikki? Like even in the example that we've got you looking at one now, are you to the point where on that one you could?
Not yet. I mean, I have to go and have meetings with this said person. Like the, the, there's still research to be done that is going to require me to go off campus to have a meeting. But like.
Wait, the, are, these are meetings that you can't have with a phone call?
I mean, you, you, yes, you can, but a lot of times people don't want to have a phone call meeting, especially when you're talking about funding and you're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars that they need to be on the hook for or potentially not be on the hook for. Those are in, that, a phone conversation is an informal meeting. Whenever you are trying to collaborate with an entity regarding certain guidelines and regulations about funding, th- tho- that needs to be a personal meeting to where we are sitting down and we are going over and o- over the guidelines set forth in the NOFO and whether or not who's going to do what, like the, the, there are several meetings that happen, that have to happen whenever you're writing a grant. Um, that's why it's so important for us to start early rather than in the eleventh hour because of the work that, the, the footwork that has to be done whenever, whenever you're, you're writing a grant. And so I, I just, I just, I'm just trying to relay to you, um, what I've done in the past that works. And you're telling me that you want me to do something different. And so I'm just trying to, to make it clear. And you're telling me that you want me to do something different and so I'm just trying to, to make it clear to everyone. That the change that you're proposing or your district is proposing. Will potentially make my job a lot more difficult and will potentially have a different outcome. And I just wanna, I just want everyone to be clear.
Sounds that there's two districts that are at least interested in that, okay?
Yeah, I just wanna make you clear too. I would prefer all three districts.
I'm clear. I think we need to focus internally. You said all this legwork and stuff that needs to happen. I think if you don't have the support of two commissioners, sign off on this. And you've spent a whole lot of legwork, you've wasted a whole lot of time when we can be looking at other stuff. We got one grant specialist. To help the entire county. And when I say the entire county, I'm talking about the governmental county. I'm not talking about the county as a. So we've got to help manage that for you. So I think before we get too in-depth, it needs to come here before you start investing a significant amount of time. In a proposal and then you can let us know what's gonna be involved in this particular thing. And then we can have an informed, we can make an informed decision whether we want you to move forward. Uh, pursuing that grant or not.
I do think it is important so that way you don't spin your wheels. And so, for instance, I know what grant you're talking about. And so, and I'm sure you do too, but, um, because we're not ready to discuss it and, and, and further detail. So what that would look like is, is that you've come to us just to, to visit about what this would look like for this grant. Um, I think we both provided the same recommendation of the person you should call. You make that call, you gather that information and then you bring it back to this committee. Um, in order for us to say, okay, yes, based off of that call. We do want you to, to move forward in regards to applying for that or, you know, continue to do more discovery. I just, we just don't want you to spin your wheels. And so, and we want you to be incredibly, uh, successful and productive and efficient. And so, um, I still agree that spending time in the office is priority. I do, the only thing that I would add is I do think it's important to have, um, collaborations. And it is something that I am very proud of that Nikki did create was a, a collaboration with other grant professionals in regards to meeting. Oh, is that weekly? No. It, maybe once a month, you know, in order to build relationships, collaborate. Be re- re-energized as a grant writer is important. I mean, it is, it's a lot of work. And so when you get to get around other people that are like-minded and, and gain energy from collaboration and communication and learning more about grants, I think. That's fine, you know, if it was like a one, um, once a month, you know, meeting over lunch or whatever, I think is whenever you guys usually do that. Or in the evening, so that's not really impacting our day to day. Is, this is just not a community facing. Going out, trying to find grants for us to help support position. We just really want to focus. Right now, where you're at internally, you're here in the office, you're doing the research. You're finding awesome grants to, you know, for a step by four. You're communicating with. Those that are, are present before you in regards to, hey, what do you think about this? We can provide you guidance. Kinda like the idea of the way that you're talking about is we're the grant managers, we're the ones that are helping you determine what that looks like. We could do some. You know, more groundwork on our own individual, you know, time in regards to helping you be successful, but we really. Need somebody here to write grants. And so, and I know that that's a strong opinion of commissioner Mon, you know, we wanna have someone here. You know, writing grants and, and make sure that we're really efficient, um, with your position and, and the dollars that. Um, we're able to s- to secure and making sure that, you know, compliance, writing grants is one thing. As a grant writer, the, the hard part is all the compliance and all of the, the work that comes after. Writing the grant, you know, and getting the grant is, is fun and exciting, but as the center is in the background right now, there is a lot of work that goes into making sure that. We're, we're doing everything and doing our due diligence, um, on behalf of the county and sh- and, and ensuring that we're using those dollars properly. And so that takes up a lot of time. And so we just wanna make sure that you're here and successful in doing that. Um, but I would say that having a, you know, an opportunity to, to collaborate and re-energize with other grants professionals. You know, I would be fine with that, once a month. Since we're getting so in, in the minutia of, in, in the grasses of, of that question. I just don't want you to feel like you're stuck in that you can't get out. But there's not a reason for you to go out every day and, and need to have meetings and coffees and, and everything. And you had asked the question in regards to what that looks like. You're primarily in the office.
Right, absolutely.
There's an opportunity once a month for you to collaborate, maybe get some, you know, training and then, but your focus is here.
It is. It, and, and that's what it's always been.
The, I think the word that I used earlier.
Chain yet to the desk.
The word that I used earlier was reasonable. It needs to be reasonable. I think that's what I said earlier. Collaboration once a month, you know, for an hour, two hours over lunch, I think is reasonable. But going to every meeting that's out there. And not here and focus externally, I think is not reasonable.
Yes, sir. And I agree with you and I just wanna be clear that that's, you know, my, been my focus is, is that I have been here. And that I have not solicited for outside grant opportunities with outside organizations that. That's just come up just through the nature of the grant. But every grant that I've worked on, it has been an internal grant and I, I wouldn't abuse. The ability to go out and, 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 and do anything. Like I understand I'm not community facing. I understand that. You know, my home base is here. I get that. I just wanted to try to just be somewhat more clear about. You know, something that was said and I get it, I, I, I maybe I took it too literally. Um, but I, I hear that and I just want, I just want us to all be on the same page. I just want all three of us to communicate about. What you guys want me to do and I know that it's all been communicated that you want me successful. So I'm just trying to give guidance and feedback what has made me successful in these two years. So I'm just, so that's it, so.
Any other questions? Does that?
Nope, that's good. I got it.
Well, we do appreciate you and, um, appreciate the collaboration and, and, and better understanding of what this looks like. So you can be successful and you, so you know what our expectations are moving forward. And that was the whole purpose of. Looking at your job description since you had gone from, you know, the purchasing to the clerk, you know, back to the O C C. We just wanted to make sure that there was clear defined, um, expectations and this is what you're being evaluated on. And so we wanted to make sure that we're all three on the same page. So thank you for, for your time, Miranda. Anything else?
Thank you.
Any further discussion regarding our items? Any citizen participation? Seeing none, board comments?
Motion to get.
Got a motion in a second. All in favor?